Good evening and welcome to the June 19, 2024 regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box. I'm calling the meeting to order. Matt, would you please call the roll?
Bird.
Present.
Freeman.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Corbin. Soul.
Here.
Rowan.
Present.
Shay.
Here.
Schultheis.
Present.
And Mayor Box.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum for tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years. First with an opening prayer this evening by Councilmember Freeman, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us.
If you're inclined, I ask that you join me. Lord, we come before you this later in this day after our busy workdays, and we're thankful for all the different responsibilities that you have granted to us and caused us to undertake through this day. We ask now that this meeting would you would cause us to be able to focus well on the agenda before us, that we can give our best attention and decision-making skills to manage well. Thank you for all the staff behind each one of these agendas. We ask that you would just bless them with a wonderful success in each of their responsibilities. Thanks again for this day, and it's by your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is our consent agenda items, and if you're paying close attention, you'll notice that we do not have our city clerk here this evening, nor do we have our city manager. We have our assistant city manager who's doing a dual role this evening, so we promise to be nice to him as he does this, but we know that he's eminently capable. And the consent agenda items are considered to be fairly routine. They've been previously reviewed by council, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from consent agenda, and then it will be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask that, Matt, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Yes. For A, excuse the absence of Councilmember Corbin. For B, approve the minutes of the June 5, 2024 regular meeting. For C, accept executed oath of office. 12A1, report FY 2025 terms of service updates from the Board of Public Works. 12A2, also from the Board of Public Works, a bill of sale and utility easement at Shoreline Flats. 12A3, from the Board of Public Works, grant of utility easement for Timber Ridge Estates subdivision. 12A4, Board of Public Works, grant of utility easement for 16 Graves Place, Holland. For H, Board of Public, or excuse me, 12A5, Declaration of Surplus Material for the Fourth Quarter from the Holland Board of Public Works. And 12A6, Board of Public Works, FY 2025 property insurance coverage for HBPW Energy Production Assets. 12E 2.1, set brownfield hearing for GF&amp;K Equity Holdings LLC and Jubilee Ministries Incorporated. Request to approve brownfield plan for 467 Ottawa Avenue. 12E 4.1, April financial reports. 12E 4.2, fiscal year 2024 year-end budget amendments. 12E 4.3, declare items as surplus, police operations bicycles. 12E 4.4, declare items as surplus transportation. 12E 4.5, adopt resolution to place delinquent ordinance violation invoices on summer 2024 property tax bills. 12E 5.1, approval of agreement with Community Action House for the donation of found bicycles. 12E 6.2, fiscal year 2025 non-union wage adjustment recommendation. 12E 6.3, appointments to Downtown Development Authority Board. And finally, 12E 6.4, approve 2024 double up food bucks grant for the Holland Farmers Market.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Is there any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Freeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul. Any discussion? Seeing none. Matt, would you please call the roll?
Bird.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Soul.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schultheis.
Yes.
And Mayor Box.
Yes.
That passes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for the public to be able to speak to council and frankly to all of our boards, committees, and commissions at both our regular meetings and our study sessions. We do have guidelines that we ask you to follow. This is one-way communication. This is your opportunity to be able to speak to council about any subject that you think is important. We do not engage in discussion or answer questions during this time period, but if there is a question that arises, that staff may be able to circle back around and answer that question for you after the meeting. We do ask that you limit your time to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means your time has expired, and we are strict about that. We do ask that when you approach the podium, that you speak just one time to council and that you state your name and your municipality for the record. Having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Hunrickson from Zeeland. Just want to show you something I'm going to be mentioning. If you remember, over the past four years, nine churches have been denied the use of the Collin Park bandshell. For three years, they had their worship services in the grassy areas because of separation of church and state. Now the churches are denied use due to the policy that says only those who are sponsored by a department may use the bandshell. Thus, the worship is still on the grassy areas. The good news is that Director Andy Kenyon spoke to me saying that if we ever wanted to use the bandshell, he would be happy to assist, especially for the concerned women of a miracle worship rally this summer. Thank you, Mr. Kenyon, for your kindness. That is one step forward. The remaining question is, will the clerk assistants be informed as to how to respond to pastors who apply to use the bandshell? And will they be denied again the use before the policy, as the, because of the policy as they have in the past? Next week is June 29. Will be the Pride Festival in Centennial Park. The festival is sponsored and supported financially by the Holland Human Relations Commission as a community event. The Pride Festival is advertised on billboards, Facebook, et cetera, throughout the state, and the networking of lesbian, gays, transgendered, transvestites, bisexuals, and more are the ones who primarily attend. For the tulip time locals come out in costume to enjoy the parades, the carnival rides, and of course, the tulips. On the other hand, the Pride Festival, Holland population predominantly does not attend this event. Why? Their taxpayer money is supporting it. In your survey taken recently, was there ever a question, do you attend the Pride Festival? Why or why not? How about asking the public on comments about the library and the influx of children's books containing sexual relationships, not friendships, gender identity, transgendering process, picture books, and more? The public schools also are accelerating pride activities. Children can be made aware of their sexual ideology that strongly influences them with the possibility that they are different on the inside than their biology. Yes, as a parent, you can take your children to private schools for a better education, but what happens to the children who are left behind? I believe Mayor Box of the League of Women Voters commented his advocacy for public schools because that was his primary education. What would become of him today if he had this acceleration of sexual material in his public school career? As the city council, you're responsible for all the people and systems, especially the children. You should be concerned about those families who cannot afford private better education. I understand this year the public schools will be required to have our children K through 12 declare their pronoun. Also, the preliminary sex education will begin K through 12. The rationale is, in this sexual culture, children need to know all the safety measures and protection in sexual behaviors. Would the parents be informed? If children are opted out, will the school be responsible to those children to have classes in character building to substitute the sexual education? The library and schools have their own boards, I realize. When the City of Holland instituted sexual orientation in a punitive ordinance that opened the floodgates for all these boards to safely formulate their similar decisions, these laws should influ, your laws should influence the city with safety and well-being. This is not the case. I admonish you all. Just out of respect for your office, come to the 2024 Pride Festival. Bring your family. What you will see is sexual orientation at its best. Let your conscience determine how this ordinance should be revised to reflect the community who lives here, not the ordinance dictated by the State of Michigan government. You, as a council, must do something before the ideology takes your city down. Something sustainable. The Pride Festival should be on private property. It should not be funded by taxpayers. Someone said, you cannot legislate morality. So why then did the previous council unknowingly legislate immorality? LGBT people should be respected. Their celebration of the sexual behaviors are private matters.
I'm sorry, your time has expired. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, special order of the day, public hearings. Community and Neighborhood Services, a PA 198 tax abatement for Starfish Brands LLC. Mr. Van Dyken.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had some fairly large tax abatements come in recently, and this is a one that's perhaps not of the scale that we've done, but I think is very important, and Mark Byers is going to come up and explain a little bit more about the company, the tax abatement, the term, and yeah, give you an update on all of those things, all things tax abatements.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, I'm back. The industrial expansions continue. If you're keeping score, this will be our sixth industrial expansion since the first of the year, or new facility in this case. So previously, we had a company locate here from out of country and one from out of state. This is a locally grown company from out of town, and they're going to be onshoring their manufacturing, so this is a cool project. And as Matt indicated, we've had some very large expansions, multimillion, even billion-dollar expansions with thousands of jobs. This is a little smaller scale, but no less important because it's important to have a diversity in our industrial base, not only of products, but also size of employers, so large, medium, and small. So tonight, City Council is asked to, excuse me, consider a tax abatement request from Starfish Brands. They'll be located at 72 West 64th Street, Suite 200 in Holland. The company is based in Hudsonville, Michigan. They're a small, family-owned manufacturer and supplier of custom branded disposable products for the food and beverage industry. This project includes 7,500 square foot buildout of a speculative space, and again, it's to onshore their manufacturing from out of country to make it local. The amount of investment is just about $600,000 in real property improvements. The project is estimated to create three to 10 new jobs within the next two years. I'd like to mention, and we've discussed this before, but although tax abatements have a maximum term of 12 years, the Treasury Department has said we have to consider the length of the lease term, and the lease term for this company is three years. So we're asking for a three-year abatement tonight. However, they could come back if they extend their lease in the future for the balance of the 12 years. With that, we do have a representative of the company, the owner Gilbertson Ramsey, is here to either present or answer any questions council may have, and then as well as Ryan Ferrier from Lakeshore Advantage, our EDO. So with that, questions, comments?
Great. Any questions for staff? I just have one, Mark. You keep referring to this as a speculative PA 198. Typically, and I think we already did one, the speculative for this building, isn't it?
The building.
Turning the speculative into a regular for this portion of that building? Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that, that they're actually going to be in, doing the manufacturing there rather than trying to put the speculative in place for future tenants. This is an actual tenant within that speculative space.
Right. The speculative IFT was approved previously, and that's for the owner of the building. This will now become a new IFT for the tenant, and the tenant will receive that.
Okay. Great.
Abatement, not the owner.
Excellent. That's what I was thinking it was. I just wanted to double check and make sure for the public as well. Any other questions from council? I just, I have one other one, and it's for the applicant, and it's because I have to. I'm curious, are you providing those products, and I'll have you come up to the microphone. Are you providing those products for area businesses? I'd love to kind of get an idea of exactly what it is that you're doing there.
Yeah, so in the facility down there, we're going to be printing on plastic cups, like clear plastic cups, and we provide for, we're currently in all 50 states, and these are currently being made overseas, and we are trying to get away from that, produce everything locally. So in this facility, we will be printing on plastic cups for companies all over the country, including Michigan.
That's, I'm amazed that you, for three to 10 people and 7,000 square feet, can do that many cups all around the country. Well done.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
That's fabulous.
We've got to start small, and you know, who knows? Maybe we'll be back here with a construction project in, you know, three or four years.
That's fabulous.
So that'd be exciting, too.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from council members? You're good, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Shay.
Do you have plans for, there's buildout to be done, correct, in the space?
It's built out.
Okay.
It's already, yeah.
You're all done. See, then my question?
Yeah, yeah, we're printers there, and yeah, it's there. So, yeah.
Excellent. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Wonderful. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We do need to do a public hearing on this item. We are going to open it up for the public. If any member of the public would like to address council in regard to this particular item, the rules are the same as general public comment. Each person gets to speak one time on this item for up to five minutes. I'll open that public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Bird. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Schultheis. Any discussion? Seeing none. Matt, would you please call the roll?
Freeman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Soul.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schultheis.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business. Traffic changes, parking restrictions on Central Avenue in front of Maplewood School, 22nd Street between Maple and Washington Avenues, and around Holland Aquatic Center driveways. Mr. Van Dyken.
Yes, thank you. This item was one we talked about at your last regular meeting. Brian White presented. He's going to present again if you have any additional questions. This is one of those items that comes to you, you table it or post-oponate. There's always confusion on what we do. That goes back to the traffic committee. And then the traffic committee is the one that are actually making this recommendation to you. So with that, I will let Brian explain the details.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Box. Council members and audience members and folks tuning in via video. Tonight before you, as indicated, is a traffic change, a couple of traffic changes involving parking in a couple of areas. As was discussed, this item came before you at the prior regular meeting on June 4. It was tabled, as we typically do with traffic committee recommendations. Notices went out to property owners and business owners that are adjacent to the areas that will be affected by this. To my knowledge, I don't believe we've received any comments, at least through the mail or electronically at this point. And basically, just to elaborate again on what the details of the changes are, the first area in front of Maplewood School, the former Maplewood School in the Maplewood neighborhood is along the east side of Central Avenue. Along that school frontage, there's currently no parking restrictions there. That's a legacy of when that school was part of the Holland Public School Network. The use of that school has changed to more of a pre-school application, and there's been a request there to remove that parking, that no parking restriction along the east side of Central Avenue so that the pickup and drop-off operation can happen right there along the school frontage. So that's one of the elements of the proposed changes. The second item there for changes involve parking and specifically new parking restrictions around the Holland Aquatic Center. And specifically, and there's some visuals there in the packet, but what we're talking about is parking restrictions right around the driveway approaches to the aquatic center, as well as along 22nd Street. It would be the south side of 22nd Street, right there, along the Holland Aquatic Center frontage. So those are the areas that we're proposing to have parking restrictions added.
Great. Thank you. Just a point of parliamentary procedure, and Vince, I'm going to turn this over to the city attorney. I don't recall whether we actually tabled this or postponed it to a date certain. It's showing up as unfinished business on the agenda. I just want to make sure that we, whether we need a motion to remove this from the table before we do anything with it, or if we're in good stead by just acting on it because it's under unfinished business.
I was kind of thinking the same thing. The, what I heard was we postponed it. I don't believe a motion was made to lay on the table. You can certainly make a motion to any extent you want to, to just be careful and protect the record, right, to remove. But I think it was to postpone. It wasn't necessarily a specific day, and, but yeah, I think if you would like a motion, I think that'd probably be a nice way to make sure the record is clear that, to any extent, it is considered on the table. A motion to remove it from the table before action is probably fine.
I think I'm going to ask if there's a member of council that would be interested in making a motion to remove this from the table. Moved by Rowan. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Bird. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Items removed from the table. Good. Now we can actually talk about this. Any questions for staff? Seeing none?
I don't have a question, but just a discussion point.
Sure.
I did these corners at the entrances every morning. I don't know if anyone else has noticed it. It can be tough. I'm glad for those areas. The...
Let's, if you're going to continue down that road, let's wait until we actually have a motion on this.
Sure.
Is there, what is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to, excuse me, move to approve the proposal.
Moved by Freeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Shay. Is there any discussion on this item, Mr. Shay?
Yes. Thank you. The 22nd Street, I rode my bike to, to check it out and see what it looked like with cars on each side of the road, and I do think that it is pretty tight, and so I'm happy about this. But I do just want to remind everyone that removing parking can make streets faster. And so just keeping in mind of traffic calming measures, and if these are words or phrases that you're not familiar with, you know, Google them or talk to me. I love talking about traffic calming, so that's all.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Mr. Bird?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on this. I live directly across the street on 22nd Street from the Aquatic Center. I'm happy about this move. I agree with you 100%, but at this juncture, when there's an event at the Aquatic Center, we, I've had to pull in my driveway, well, as I'm backing out or pulling out, I've had to pull back in because there's no room in there. It's one lane when traffic's on both sides or cars are parked on both sides, and there's a lot of blind spots, so. And most of the time, there are people who are not from our area, and they just don't know the lay of the land or how things work. So some of them come flying down there, you know, so. So I'm pretty happy about it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Matt, would you please call the roll?
Raymond.
Yes.
Soul.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schultheis.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
That passes.
Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the public the opportunity to address us in person at our meetings, we do also have an email address. And if you send an email to publiccomment@cityofholland.com, it will be received by all council members. We review those in between our regular meetings, and if we have them, we do accept them into the record at the regular meeting. We don't read them out loud, but they are accepted as part of the record. We do not have any this evening, but I always like to let people know that that is an option for them. Again, that's publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Next item on the agenda, item 12E 3.1, award bid for bike course design services. Mr. Van Dyken.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask Garrett to come up to the podium to give you guys some more specific information. But you know, recently, we've been really checking off a lot of capital projects that have been on the list for a long time, right? We've got 50-year-old fire stations. We've got ice rinks that have been talked about for 90 years. We've got 100-and-some-year-old museum that we're really working on, but this particular one's a newer one. It was an idea that came to us from the public. It's, everybody that we've talked to that is interested in biking is really excited about this thing. There's something that, there's things that are popping up all over the place, and people really enjoy them outside, recreation. Seems like a great fit. So there is money available in the upcoming fiscal year to accomplish this planning piece, and then we would more than likely be building probably next year. But Garrett, please go ahead and give all the background on all the work that you've been doing. Garrett's been doing a great job of heading this project up. And yeah, let them know what's going on.
Yeah. Thanks, Matt. Counsel, yeah, I'm very excited to talk to you guys tonight. My 10-year-old self would just be jacked about this project and where I get to be right now, so, yeah. And so I was very excited about this when it got presented to us, and I think Matt knew that I wasn't going to give up on this one easily. So, yeah, here we are, and yeah, he's been great, and it's supporting you 100%. So we started, I guess, just from the top on this. Obviously, it came from a local idea, but the master plan also supports this. So here's some of the steps that we went through before we got to this point. Tried to do our research. Obviously, that's something that council requires of us, and it's something that was, you know, exciting and fun to do, actually. So we spoke to a lot of different municipalities, schools that are both in our area, and I had the opportunity to go down to Northwest Arkansas and check out, which is the mountain biking mecca of the world, basically. the world, basically, which was very, very cool and just kind of see what's possible with this. And obviously, it's, they've been working on that for years. But overall, there was, there was definitely a lot of merit to what was being suggested and I saw it right away and I was very excited about it. But a few other touch points on there, Outdoor Discovery Center is already working on some mountain bike courses at their old radio station property and then they're working on at the Park Township Airport property as well, or the old airport property, I should say. So, yeah, and then we have also made contact with people who've recently put these things in, Madison and then Rogers Bentonville, all those. And then Holland Charter Township, since this is going to be, as you guys will see, very, very close to the border, we made sure to make contact with them and make sure that they're aware that this could be a possibility in the very, very near future. So it's $42,000 cost for these design services and that's the itemized breakdown of what's involved with that. So the first part, which I kind of view as the anchor of the area, it's a pump track. We were hoping that this would be an asphalt surface that's roughly about 400 feet long and then American Ramp Company, the company that bid on this, they would be providing the construction documentation for this as well. So being an asphalt surface, primarily used for bikes, but anything on wheels would be able to be used. So, yeah, so that's pretty exciting as well. And, yeah, it would be a very, very inclusive structure for everybody to use. Then we'd also want to put into, put in a mountain bike skills course in there as well. So this would be something that expands into the rest of the site. So as we get a little bit farther into the slides, we'll have about three to four acres that are usable for that. And this will be something that we'd be able to use some imagination, public input from the groups that are really interested in using this space. And then this would be on a dirt track in the flat areas. But then we also are able to add features similar to like a playground. You're able to have these pre-built features that you order. You don't have to do it all at once. You can kind of grow as this bike park grows and as we grow into it and also give, you know, I mean, just fun ideas would be, you know, having the public have an opportunity to look at and give input on what would be the next feature involved. And then this is a, just a conceptual design phase from American Ramp. They won't be providing any construction documentation, obviously, because we don't know exactly what we're going to need yet for that portion. So why do we want to do this? Besides the idea that there's, you know, the local support that we've got from the five-year master plan, our rec department has been able to have a major increase in bike programming. We partnered with Velo City. I don't know if anybody's been down the window on the waterfront this week, but it's been awesome. You can see the gentleman in the blue down there is really fired up about it. So that's, you know, that's kind of a response that we've gotten from a lot of the kids that we've been able to support in this. And it also fits into a larger picture in the community. That's kind of mentioned ODC and then the other part is municipalities. I think, you know, somebody's got to go first on these, some of these types of initiatives and I think that we could be leaders in this, which would be a really cool opportunity as well. And then we're also going to be able to activate a space that needs to be activated, which is, yeah, it's, the space that is on the next slide will show that it's been used for the wrong purposes and this would be an opportunity to use it for one of the right ones. So. So this is the site. I was excited to find out that that's city property, actually, because I was always told north of the bridge is, yeah, that's not ours. So 97 North River Ave is where it's going to be. And then so that site itself, it shows that's 16 acres from Ottawa County GIS, but we would only be using three to four acres on that. That would be, that would be high enough above the river level that we'd be able to use. So that's a picture from the Google Street View. I went out, tried to take pictures yesterday and I just couldn't get a good one, but so I just ended up snapping that one, taking that one from online. But it's right on the McCall Greenway. So that's essentially, if you're on the Unity Bridge, you'd be looking over across, that's the space that would be utilized. And so this is the slide that I'm pretty excited about. When I did go down to Arkansas, they have something called the Razorback Greenway or, and it's, it basically, they referred to that as the spine that was able to drive all the other investment involved. And it's pretty neat that we already have our version of that spine in our community. And this bike park would pretty much be smack dab right in the middle of that and allow accessibility for not only our community, but a lot of different communities as well. So that part's really exciting. And, yeah, I think it's just another way that we can bring this community together. I mean, if they, if we help bring awareness with this pump track of that McCall Greenway as well and we give people a reason to be using it more, I think it's a great opportunity for a lot of different people to meet and provide a small little community down at that 97 North River Ave spot. So that little red X is right where it would be. So. Other than that, that's pretty much what I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Great. Thanks, Garrett. Questions for staff? Yes, Kim?
Thank you for your presentation. So the $42,000 price tag is really just drawings, designs. It's all concepts still, right? There's nothing, no shovel to earth or any of the construction portion of it, right?
Right. Construction documentation would be in for the pump track portion, but not for the actual mountain bike course.
Do you have any, I mean, I know you're not here asking for that portion of it yet.
Yeah.
But what universe is that in for cost, do you think?
So traditionally, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but usually it's 10% is what designed to the actual project cost. Is that?
Yeah, so you're looking at a few hundred thousand dollars further down the road. Obviously, that's got to come back to city council for approval. But one of the pieces that we'll get from this also is an opinion of probable cost from the company. So we've heard anywhere, depending on the size of the pump cycle tracks, they can be 175,000 to $400,000. There's pump cycle tracks that are big, big, big. So that's one of the pieces that we get. We are looking at putting this in an area that is in the floodplain. So a portion of these costs and don't think of them as just somebody sketching out a conceptual design. It's working with an engineering firm, an actual engineering firm, to go through and make sure that we're asking the appropriate questions of Eagle and only putting things in that floodplain that we're allowed to do and doing that in an appropriate way. So there's a lot more that goes into this, I can tell you, than we initially thought. I'm just building a BMX track in my backyard when I was a kid, right, and jumps and stuff and knocking the wind out of myself. But there is, there's actually a science to this.
So you've actually presupposed my next question, which was the thought of, the need for remediation for that area? Because you made a reference to, it was previously used for a wrong purpose or I don't know what your words were, but, or was it just wasteland not being developed, not being used? Is that right?
So we actually had to take a bunch of trash out of there. The Parks Department took a significant amount of trash out of that area to get it back. To pristine, did some tree trimming and things like that. There may not be any remediation that has to happen because we're not actually building a structure in the floodplain. But I'm not an expert in that. Garrett and Andy aren't experts in that that I'm aware of. So a big part of this project is to have somebody to walk along with us to understand what we actually need to do in there. A lot of times when people are building floodplains or floodways, it's a structure that's the concern. So you're going to hear about a building at Windmill Island Gardens here in the next month or so. And we had to go through a process to be able to build that correctly. It's not that you can't do it, but we're not experts in that for that one. Also, we had to hire an engineering firm to come in and walk along with us to understand what we can and can't do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Schultheis?
Yeah, so fun to talk about. I'm thinking about how much fun the pump track could be in the wintertime. But what I'd really be concerned about is the liability that might present. Is the, the design work going to evaluate like security measures, gates and things like that for what could or might be liability issues off season?
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for bringing that up. I think most likely, we're focusing on beginner to intermediate tracks. We don't want to try to host the X Games at this site. So I think the biggest thing would be is we're trying to spark a passion and, yeah, we'll see how the community grows with it. But for the most part, it'll be, yeah, the liability is definitely something that's been brought up.
Any other questions for staff? No. I have lots and lots of questions that are probably going to come after this, this phase of it. I've got lots of how and why and what's going to go there and how we're going to use it. But I think that at this stage, we're looking at this investigative work to be able to see what, what the possibilities are there and then some additional design stuff. So great. Thank you, Garrett. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Byrd. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Schultheis. Any discussion? Seeing none. Matt, would you please call the roll?
Saul?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Schultheis?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Reiman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 12E 6.1, gifts. Matt, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. A donation of $5,615.06 was received from the annual tulip dig held on June 1, 2024 for the Parks and Recreation Department.
All right. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Moved to approve said gifts with the token of our appreciation.
Moved by Saul. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Reiman. Any discussion? I just have, I just have two comments on this. One is that's $5,615.06 at $10 a bucket. And so what does that make that 50, 506? My math is terrible. It's a lot of buckets of tulip bulbs. Let's put it that way. So that's my one comment is it was, I was down there that day. Incredible day, incredible community event for people walking out. It is a win-win-win-win situation with that. We've got the public coming out and engaging with one another. We've got helping the Parks Department get those tulips out of the ground, raising money that goes toward local beautification projects and those bulbs get replanted all over the city, all over the state, and frankly, all over the country. People try from hours and hours and hours away to do that. And my last comment, and I don't know how we ended up with a number that ended in $6.15 when we're dealing with $10 a bucket, but we did. We have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, communications from the assistant city manager. Mr. Van Dyken?
Yeah, just one quick thing. We had a pretty big milestone in the ice rink this week. So as you all know, that we're well under construction, but a big part of what we're doing out there to make sure that that lasts for decades and decades and decades is the soil stabilization piece. So we've been working hard. We worked through tulip time. A lot of the deep underground structures have been put in. But this last week, we were able to actually get that soil stabilization done. Those folks came in and they put the pedal to the metal and it was pretty amazing to watch. I was out there, grabbed Keith and Andy and we went out there and it was like a little, three little kids watching the big trucks work. But they, they got in there, they did it. It looks, it's starting to look like what it's going to be now. So we're out of the old dump, we're out of the dredge spoils. We're actually going to start going up now and you'll start to see foundations going in. You'll start to get a better idea of what the rink is ultimately going to look like. But it was, for me, from in my chair, it was an extremely big milestone to get that done and put behind us. And now we're building buildings and we're building a ice rink and we're not worrying about the soils under the ground. So just a quick update on that. That's great. Downtown Holland is going gangbusters. Hopefully, some of you got out for street performers. The farmer's market was busy again today. It was super busy over the weekend. Looks like Hope College's camps have begun, if I can judge by all the teenagers running around and getting fro yo downtown. So I always have to remind myself and Andy and I talk about this quite often, is stop every once in a while and look around. Because we can get so focused on the project or the problem or the problem or the problem and we never, many of us never stop and just look around. And I did that the other day at the fountain in Centennial Park and it's just amazing, the stuff, the flowers that are in there. And we always, we see our visitors stop and look around, but I would just encourage all of us and anyone listening to just stop and look around a minute. It's a pretty cool place we live in and I think it's important that we all remember that from time to time. So my, that's my Keith narrative of going on and on and on. But the other, the last piece that I have for you is we have a couple of study sessions coming up, June 26, July 10th and 24. And those study sessions will look on, at some of our community partnerships. Have some of our authorities come in and just explain what they're doing, what they've got going on and get that information to council.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. Council will be very happy to know that Matt Van Dyken just talked about what I was going to talk about, which is the ice skating rink progress. The only thing I'll add is if you get the opportunity to go down there and take a look, it's really very cool. That's all I have. Item 15, appointments, motions, communications from council members. Anything from council members this evening? Seeing none. There is just one more motion I would entertain at this point.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Reiman. Is there support? Support by Rowan. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening. Stay cool.